August 22, 2023. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Treoka.
Here.
Leyland.
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions through today? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The agenda is received. Item number two is public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to make comments on something that is not on today's agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom? Hearing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against this various settlement of such claims as allowed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Veder.
Good morning, Board. We're having a pretty large bill payment today. Of that, $5,882.24 is for the Sheriff's 60-40 Fund. Let's see, there are a few large things I'll talk about quickly. Payments for the jail renovation for furniture of $59,768. Highway construction and rock of about $100,000 altogether. Making a payment for the Hickory Hills wastewater treatment plant of $84,037.76. As pro, a large payment's being made for one of the road projects, $724,828.75. And that's for the Ridgeway Avenue paving project and Main Road and Mount Auburn Road. So we've gotten a lot of construction done when it was dry in July. And we're also buying a Chevy Silverado for conservation, $52,392.20. Everything appears to be in order unless you have questions.
If there are no questions, please answer as your name is called.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Treoka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Moving on to item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer.
Morning.
Pointa Road Bridge should be opening tomorrow. Pavement markings will be applied and then the barricade should be taken down and the road will be reopened. So thanks for everyone's patience with that project. And then, as I told you last week, Elk Run Road is closed, closed yesterday for, we're hoping, just a week between Tyson's and the Northeast site. Right near the vicinity of the south driveway into the John Deere facility. We have a culvert, a large culvert underneath Elk Run Road there that the concrete surface of it has been in poor condition for the past few years. We decided it was time to repair it. They will be working on it today, probably until noon, and then maybe, possibly they'll be stopping for the day, just depending on the temperatures. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department heads?
Morning, Board. Amanda Fezmer, HR Director. Just really quick, we have just more of an update with our collective bargaining that's going to be expected this fall. We started the process, actually, PERB has started the process for the recertification elections. So if you recall, with Chapter 20, there is significant changes to the collective bargaining for public unions across the state. And one of that is that they have to recertify at least every five years, and we are at that point. So the election begins in October, basically to if they want to retain the current union representative that they've had or not. And we should know by November, excuse me, which unions and if all that will be negotiating with this fall or into this winter. One thing that I want to mention is that we've been having conversations with the department heads and management teams as to just understand what's worked well, what is hindering some of the operational needs or retention needs or hiring needs, things like that. But if any board members have any interest in speaking with me or department heads about ideas for collective bargaining, I want to encourage you to do that. And we will have a meeting with Mike Galloway, our attorney, prior to any negotiations to get an idea of what the Board's direction is for those negotiations. Any questions at all? If you do, just know where to reach me. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Good morning, Board. Caitlin Emrick with Public Health. I just have a quick update on our FY '24 budget, specifically the personnel items that you all approved earlier this year. So as of yesterday, we have filled all of the asks, the additional asks in the budget that we proposed. So we did have some resignations in our oral health programs. So we've filled a dental hygienist, but we also have a vacancy for a dental hygienist. We've also filled the emergency preparedness specialist joint with EMA. Matt Mayner is in that role. And if you haven't had a chance to meet him yet, I'll try to get you introduced. He's doing a great job, that position so far. We're about a month in, is working out really well. And we've been able to collaborate on a couple of different things already. And then just yesterday, we had our third position, the temporary community health worker to help out our tuberculosis program with some unmet need things. Florina Seibach is in that role and had her first day yesterday. So we have welcomed all three of our new positions. We continue to hire other positions as well, but since those three were included in our FY '24 budget, I just wanted to give update. Any questions for me?
Just a really quick one. You just mentioned TB.
Yeah.
Any sort of increase? I know during budget, you were anticipating some increase in cases.
Yeah, we have continued to see an increase in cases. I think when I presented the budget, we had about eight active cases, which was about double our caseload from the past five-year average. So far this year, they've done case management for 15 cases. So their current workload is not that many right now because they've been able to discharge a few. But I plan to bring an update to the Board. I'm going to bring it to the Board of Health first at our August meeting, and then I'll bring it to you as a Board after that. I'm kind of what we're seeing in trends because we are up to about triple our average caseload for this year. So thank you for asking.
Thank you.
So much needed, and we're very happy to have Florina on board to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to do an update? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, minutes approved for August 15, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Item six mentions there's a hearing and a bid opening for the purchase of two single axle dump trucks and one tandem axle dump truck later today. Item seven, consent agenda. The following items will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone wishes to remove an item for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Treoka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Moving on to other business, resolution that the Board of Supervisors directs that the local option sales and services tax referendum to be held on November 7 will not specify a date on which the tax shall automatically repeal.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Linda, I'm not, this means that we won't have a time period then, is what we're saying.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not going to support it for the mere fact of prior commitments I made to get it the 50-50 back when we voted the last time, so.
Oh, it doesn't change, this action doesn't change the 50-50. This only just.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But we also had a certain period of time where now this is going to change, so.
Okay, so that we're changing anything in it. I understand. Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Treoka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
No.
Leyland.
Yes. Item B, resolution that the Board of Supervisors directs the County Commissioner of Elections to give notice of submitting to the voters of the unincorporated area of Blackhawk County, Iowa, the proposition to authorize the imposition of a 1% local sales and services tax effective January 1, 2026, the revenue from which is to be allocated 50% for property tax relief and 50% for secondary road and bridge construction.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this item?
Just a question, point to clarify. So we're 50-50, 50% for secondary roads and bridges, 50% for property tax relief. But am I correct in understanding that that is earmarked to a specific fund? It is not just general fund tax relief? Is that correct?
That's correct. We deposit it directly to the rural fund.
And then it goes for anything that's with that? I remember you provided a graph, I think, of anything that was provided in there. And there were, I don't have that information in front of me, but some of the things that that goes for.
Most of it would be the rural sheriffs, our sheriff's deputies, the consolidated dispatch, the allocations to the libraries, and then a few.
EMA, I think, was maybe in that as well.
EMA, Northeast Iowa Response Group.
Code enforcement. Was that, or not code enforcement?
Planning and zoning is all paid out of there. But theirs happens to be pretty evenly covered by fees, so not much tax impact from that. The big users are the transfers of secondary roads and the deputies. Those are the two.
And I know Kathy had proposed, I think in our conversation, possibly considering changing that. I myself, going to speak for that opinion, I guess, thought it might be something worth considering or looking at in the future, but I wasn't really open to. We had enough time to consider where we were going to make those cuts. If we were to cut something else or look at it differently, what we certainly could.
Yeah, I mean, I think with the graph that Michelle presented, right, there is there is dollars coming out of that other 50% that's not specifically dedicated to secondary roads and bridges. There are still dollars being spent towards those projects. But I do think it makes sense to, you know, further explore whether it is straight from the rural fund or if it's a general fund. I think there's value in exploring, seeing what the impact of that would be on the budget, especially as we inch closer and closer to our 350 cap. In that general fund, it might be an opportunity to find some flexibility. I understand that there's certainly been discussions over the years that supervisors have had with folks to earn their support on this. And so if folks have to go a different way, you know, that's up to them. But, you know, the same way that we've had continued discussions at this point on this board about RFPs and the responsibility to taxpayers to make sure that we're, you know, keeping everything fresh, I think, having, refreshing some of that conversation around the use of these funds. This would be a golden opportunity, I think, to do so, so. Yeah, I'd be interested to hear, you know, maybe a little bit from Michelle next week, if possible, or just if there's not support for that, just at some point, to have a discussion of if that 50% that's currently allocated for property tax relief, if it went from the rural fund to the general fund, and how that would play out, not just for the general fund, but also for that rural fund and some of those expenditures that are coming out from there.
I can, I'll put together something for next week.
If there's an appetite for it from the Board, I guess we have to take the Board on that. But I was going to say, I am open to that when you talk about exploring it and looking at it as well. I think it is something to consider, and I think we should always be open to exploring other ways of doing it. As I mentioned this morning, too, my concern would only be the time limit that we'd have to prepare and explore it to the degree that maybe we should and be advising taxpayers and others of the change. But that was just my position, so. Other board members want to state anything, or we can take a vote on it and see where we go and.
I think, I mean, I think I'm comfortable moving forward, like, as is with the resolution today, but I would still like that information for next week because I think that even if we move forward today, we can keep that conversation still going while it's fresh and so that we don't forget about it.
Dan or Tom, any thoughts?
I'm with Chris. Yeah, I'm with Chris.
All right. This is a resolution, then. Please answer as your name is called.
Treoka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Item C, resolution that the Board of Supervisors support Phase Two of the Community Naterium funding totaling $5.7 million and herewith commit $150,000 to the project contingent on Cedar Falls and co-applicant Cedar Falls Schools being awarded the Community Attraction and Tourism Grant.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I was going to say, the ladies are here with us today to answer any questions. I think representatives of the project, if there are any. Otherwise, they weren't planning to speak today, but they're, thank you so much for being here in attendance.
I'll just say this is an exciting project. I'm appreciative that the county has been given an opportunity to be a part of it. This is going to be another regional draw for our community, which we desperately need if we want to get on the right side of growth, of building this community up and this county up. So I appreciate all the hard work that's been done on it. It's a very well-organized project, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition.
Yeah, so we were having a conversation before the meeting. It was just like that we've been supportive of CAT grants in the past and just haven't seen that many, but this is an exciting one and hope we have more. Any other comments or questions, or we'll?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to verify something. It sounded like you added some language about co-applicant Cedar Falls Schools. Is that supposed to be included?
And it is included in the full resolution. It just wasn't on this part, but yes. And I mentioned earlier, too, the full resolution is included in the agenda file. This was just summarizing to them in case they wondered. So if you'd like to, do you feel comfortable or want to read that resolution? I mean.
Yeah, I don't see it on the notes, I mean, in the minutes file in there. And I just wanted to verify that. I don't have to read the whole resolution if you don't want to. Okay.
You certainly can if you wish.
No, no, no.
No, I just mentioned, it's probably to everyone's benefit, maybe to hear.
It wasn't in my version here, so I will add it.
Okay, thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Treoka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you both for all your work and continued work. This is great. Item D, resolution that the Blackhawk County collect a total of $2,433.60 from NevZAD Osmanisavec, 36% of the $6,760 that Blackhawk County paid for Iowa Law Enforcement Academy training per the employment agreement between Blackhawk County and NevZAD.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Treoka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Item E, discussion, source of odor around the Consolidated Communications Center. And I don't.
We, now, yeah, we were made aware of this last week. This has happened several times in the past few years, and Judy is on, she's on the Zoom. She zoomed into the meeting. I'm bringing it to the Board, and we got a great email from Rory. My concern is we have to identify this source and we have to fix it because I've said in the past, this is, it really bothers me that we have employees working in these conditions. Even if it's not constant, if this is a problem that occurs on a regular basis, which it appears to, that's an issue. And the Board needs to be aware of it. We need to identify the problem, and we need to fix the problem. And more than anything, I want the Board to be aware of this issue because we may have to allocate funding to fix the problem, whatever it is. So I'd like to hear comments from the Board. I'd like to hear from Judy to see if the problem's any better. I'd like to hear more from Rory. I just, it really bothers me that we have employees working in this condition because I certainly would not want to work in them, and I wouldn't want any of my family members working in conditions such as this.
Oh, I don't know if we want Rory to, I was going to say, he had quite a lengthy email in history. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Rory Giving, Facilities Director. As Mr. Treoka had indicated, I did send an email out last week. So for this particular incident, it started on Tuesday and Wednesday. And I do understand that this is not an isolated case, but just referring to this incident, my staff is also located in the jail of the basement. I have three staff that are housed over there as well. So it is something that has been ongoing in the past. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the history, some of the actions that we have taken, meaning the maintenance department. In the last, I would say, early part of 2022, we did do a fairly extensive piping replacement for the lower level there of the jail. You know, we have several hundred feet of sewer piping located in that jail. You know, you have roughly 200 and 200-plus inmates in there. So it is an ongoing concern, but it is something that in maintenance, and I know you're not you're not saying that, you know, it's not taken serious by our department. We definitely do take it serious, and we do address the issues as they come up. But with that many hundred feet of piping down there, it is ongoing preventative maintenance that we take place over there. We did, as I mentioned, we did do our extensive piping replacement in the early part of 2022. That consisted of primarily all of the horizontal sewer piping within that facility, most of the horizontal piping. You still have a lot of vertical runs going up through the cell. As I mentioned, 272, I believe, inmates. So those, each cell has its own facility. And so you can imagine there's a lot of activity going on. And so back on this last week, I will say that there was a significant odor outside of the jail. We had reached out to the city Public Works Department, met with them. They did a thorough inspection of the sewer lines that run adjacent to the jail. There were no findings of any issues that they could see. We still do not know what the cause of that smell was, but we believe, at least last week, that that was something that our air handlers brought in from the outside because you could smell it pretty strong walking along the outside of the jail. So we do feel that that particular case was not inside the jail. Also, I feel that since we did our extensive piping replacement, it has improved, although we still have had a few cases where we've had to make repairs. But again, we keep a close eye on it, and we try to repair those as they come up, and we're doing the best we can. So any questions on that?
It did seem like last Wednesday after the meeting, which I was aware that I could smell, I smell even around, outside around the courthouse. I'm just wondering, is it something about the positioning of that air intake? Because I know that that's been a concern in the past anyways, and maybe that's something we need to think about redoing just rural, rural jail health and security and safety.
Absolutely. Even just to give you kind of an idea, our air intakes are at ground level. So for an example, when we're mowing our lawns, you can smell that taking place because it's bringing it in at ground level. So we are looking at putting an ARPA project request for upgrading our HVAC system. The focus on that was going to primarily be on the controls on the inside, but that is something we can branch out and take a look at what could possibly be reconfigured with those air intakes. I know a few years back, we looked primarily here at the courthouse for security purposes at doing something a little different with that air intake. So that is something we could research and look into. I do think that that would make a significant difference. For example, if traffic's backed up on Sixth Street and say there's a met transient bus, some of those fumes coming off those buses, sometimes you can suck those in on your air intake. So it's not uncommon for us to bring outside smells into our buildings. And again, I believe last week that was a primary example of that, so.
What's, Rory, what's the status as of today?
Pardon me?
Smell, what's the status as of today? Is the smell still there? Is it gone?
It's gone, yeah. Today, it's gone.
Would we be maybe advised to bring somebody in, a specialist, to do a study on the inside and the outside? Because this happened before, and it seems to me it was something to do with some kind of shut-off valve or something towards the river.
Like I said, I, yeah, we could certainly do that. I did meet with the supervisor of the Waste Management with the City of Waterloo. They went through their system. They didn't find anything that could be that cause. Unfortunately, Tuesday and Wednesday, I don't know if the wind was just right, if we were picking something up, possibly from a plant down the road. But again, it was particularly strong on those two days. You know, we can keep working with the city to see if we can pinpoint where this is coming from. As of right now, we just don't know. What I can say is the sewer system, based on their findings, didn't show any breach in the line, any issues there. So we do have a rendering plant that's not too far from us. That was another possibility that we looked into. Could the wind just be carrying some of that odor over? But that's a pretty specific odor, unlike sewage, so.
Are we pretty much confident that it came from the outside into our air handlers?
On those two days, on Tuesday and Wednesday of last week, I would say I'm confident just because I stood out outside the jail, and we could smell it. Inside, we searched everything that was obvious to us, everything that was visible to our staff. Didn't find any breaches in the lines. And as soon as we closed down our air dampeners that bring our air inside, that odor started to dissipate.
Yeah, it's coming from the outside somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, because I can echo what Chris said as well, standing outside and on the corner. That's where it was the strongest. Like I said, there was a heavy odor for those two days. So good to know that it wasn't inside the facility, but.
Yeah, and I will say, since we did our, again, back in 2022, you know, that was a pretty significant replacement, and it had improved greatly. Prior to that, we ran into several cases where our guys, our staff, would have to make repairs on the fly.
Well, and it's.
Is it possible to increase our filtering system on the air handlers? Something new or better to try to catch some of that? So when it does get coming through there, we can stop some of it?
That would be part of our project, our upgrade that we're looking at to see what's available out there. There are different technologies, whether it's, you know, different MERV ratings on your filters or UV lighting, which I don't think would have much to do with the odor. But, you know, there's different technologies out there that we will certainly look into. I will mention also that we have placed an air scrubber in the Consolidated Communications Facility last week. It, and this air treatment system is supposed to help remove offensive odors. So we're trying that out to see if that. So we're trying that out to see if that makes an improvement. We've also placed H2S monitors in that area just to see if the levels were to a point, and it didn't even ping on the monitor. But that doesn't mean that it didn't, that, that there wasn't an odor. It just means that the odor wasn't to a level, parts per million-wise, where it was concerning for the health. And just based on what, what the meter indicated.
Yeah, no, I'd definitely like to see a proposal on what it would take to, to move the air intake because that's a vulnerability for that building that's, I don't understand who designed the jail, but the 90s are weird, I guess.
Yeah, you, you have a lot of traffic on Sixth Street. And like I said, if you have a backup of traffic, that exhaust fumes, you have an air handler right there. So that is something that we could definitely take a harder look at, what, what could possibly be done with that.
Well, and it's good. We have this kind of on the drawing table, I guess, right now as far as looking with our funding for the HVAC system and be good to consider it.
Really wasn't where we were headed, but it's something that we can certainly pull into and take a deeper dive into looking at.
Any other questions or comments? I say thank you. I know that you spent a lot of time on that for a couple of days.
Can I just say something real quick? This is Judy Flores, Director of the Communications Center. First of all, I just, I want to say thank you to everyone for taking it serious. Rory, for your team helping us mitigate that last week. And even though the, the piece of equipment you brought in to measure the air didn't reflect any health issues, we did have employees that were having breathing difficulties. I had several that had headaches. The smell was so strong, they were nauseous. It was, and to be just blunt about it, it was like you were working in, I don't know, for lack of a better term, an outhouse situation, and that's what the smell was. It was pretty horrendous. We've had that several times. It's not as bad as it was prior to the fix that Rory talked about. But there's been several times this year where we've had some issues with some of the smells. And I'm glad to hear that you're going to look at the air handling system and the fresh intake because even those diesel smells coming in cause headaches. And, you know, when people have asthma and situations like that, it can aggravate it. So I, I'm happy to work with whoever to help resolve the situation. And I appreciate Supervisor Tralka putting it on the agenda and the board listening to us and taking action to hopefully mitigate it and so that it is a better environment to work in. Unfortunately for the dispatchers, it's 24/7 operation. They don't have the luxury of getting away from it. They have to stay here and answer the calls and, and send responders and so forth. So taking it serious, which I think you are, I truly want to say that I appreciate it.
Judy, was the smell at a certain time of the day or night?
Well, it started in the morning. I didn't hear about it from third shift, but when the morning shift started coming in, probably about 8:00 that morning, it got really, really bad. And then I was at, I was out doing the school shooting training for the new radios that we're putting in. And as I came in that morning around 10:00 or 10:30, it was pretty bad, it coming down the stairway. But when I came in the center, because we, it's pretty much enclosed, the doors, you know, we have, for safety purposes, we keep the doors shut. It was horrendous. I mean, it was, it was, you couldn't get away from it. I mean, it would open your sinuses up if it was that bad.
There's, there's definitely a breach outside that building. And I don't know why it doesn't do it consistently, and it's only every so often. But somehow, we got to figure out whether it's Waterloo, ours, or whatever, but we got to get this fixed. And I think the only thing we can do to that point is hopefully we can improve our air handler system, the filtering system.
Thank you. Thank you, Rory. Moving on to item F there, sign is 9:25, 9:35, I'm sorry. And for the hearing and bid opening, on the hearing and bid opening, for purchase of two single axle dump trucks and one tandem axle dump truck. Motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication, of notice, public hearing.
So moved, second.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments are received.
So moved, second.
Second.
Mr. Vitor, were there any written comments?
No, ma'am.
Oral comments?
Would it be appropriate for me to make some comments now?
I, I would think so, yes, since we don't have any bids to open or anything.
We have received no bids on this, during this public hearing. We have been in close contact with Truck Centers and Truck Country, both Freightliner dealers. We've been working very closely with Truck Centers, and they just were not available. They've been working directly with Freightliner, the manufacturer. They were just not ready to offer us to put together a bid. They needed more time than our public hearing would allow for them to put together a bid. We would like to close this public hearing and then re, re-ask for another public hearing next week. So this would allow them to have more time to work with us to get exactly the specifications for our truck, for trucks that we want, and then be able to submit a bid in a more timely manner with exactly what we need.
Is that mostly because, I guess, of the number of vehicles? Because we were asking for two separate types of vehicles?
So the issue is, we've, I've told you in the past that Freightliners just not, they're allocating who they're, who, who they're making trucks for and who these dealers are, are able to sell trucks to. Truck Country in Cedar Rapids told us they would not sell us a truck. They don't have any trucks to allocate for us. The one man, the one vendor here who can allocate us some trucks is, is asking for more time to, now that they know they can allocate us some trucks to work with us to, to get together a bid.
Oh, I guess that ends kind of, I was gonna say.
I don't know that we can just simply extend it a week.
No, no, she's, to add it to next week's agenda to advertise for.
For another public hearing.
Okay, okay, good. I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine. Thank you. Better to clarify. Any other questions, comments? Anyone online? I was gonna say, Tom or Dan? I would assume we just don't.
We just move on if we're not going to have a public hearing, correct?
That's what I assume. There's no action needed. So we'll just move on to item nine. Thank you, Kathy.
Still have a vote to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So we've motioned to vote for, to do that. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The hearing is closed. Thank you, and thank you, Grant. Item nine, any reports or information from the board?
I've, two things I want to share. One, I just want to invite everybody to come down and join us at Cedar Valley Pride Fest this Friday and Saturday. We're very excited. We've put on a really great lineup of everything from art, the dancers, to music, and so it's gonna be really great. The other thing with these extreme weather temperatures that we're having right now, we've, a decision's been made to open the new warming center up for the next, for Tuesday night and Wednesday night here to provide overnight cooling options for, for folks. So we know that there are plenty of daytime cooling options, but when the body's not able to cool down at night and regulate, that's a very dangerous situation for folks. So if folks are in need of a place to cool down in the overnight hours, they can, they're, they're welcome at 1022 West Fifth Street here in Waterloo.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? I know Mr. Tralka, I think you had some comments, but did Tavis or Tom? Okay. Dan?
Yes, yes. Two items I have. The first is, I'm going to put on the agenda for next week a discussion about Consolidated Dispatch and the funding mechanisms and such because due to the discussions we've been having with the mayors. And I just want to get a, I mean, the board needs to be aware of what's, everything that's going on. And I'd like to hear from other board members in where they want us, where they see us going or what we can do. You've heard me say before, there are too many cooks in the kitchen. We're still experiencing that. I was slightly frustrated with the last meeting because all they want, yeah, I'm not even going to get into it. I'll get into it when it's on the agenda. Because otherwise, we get into, it gets too close to discussion. Item number two is the Waterloo Police Department would like to approach us, like to give us a presentation and make a request for some of the opioid settlement funds. I told them I would make the board aware of this presentation, and I would try to schedule it for sometime in September.
Were they going to be providing us, I guess, copies or some information on the presentation, or?
Yes, they certainly will. They're preparing it right now.
Okay, super. And then they'll get with you to schedule a date for September?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, super. Thank you. Anything else? Any other board members? Okay, super. All right, we'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved, second.
Moved, moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
You're gonna give me a gift.